Between forty-seven and sixty-six than there is from five over to the cemetery. Is there any recent new traffic study or is that kind of irrelevant?
No, I don't ever think that traffic studies are irrelevant.
The last time they were counted here, I don't remember what gen was more, but it was like three hundred in one and four hundred another.
It's not.
Pretty close.
Yeah, it's not that much to make that.
So that study's been down on Old Viking Boulevard?
That was back like in ninety-one, ninety-two or.
Oh.
One day it counted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, with Old Viking Boulevard too, another question that I have is, you know, the traffic on it. Well, if it has higher traffic volumes, do we want to keep it that way?
And it's, it is a nice and road, I believe, isn't it?
Right, but a lot of people are, you know, just not getting on Viking Boulevard. And in the future, I mean, there are still some undeveloped properties and we could do some realigning so it's not as straight. And so we don't have as many people take that as a shortcut, you know, reduce the traffic.
So would you want to reduce the wait limit on?
Well, would you want to put money into something that you might realign in the future would be the thing that I look at. I, I look at, we have, you know, forty-seven and five are north-south routes. You know, and all that property in between, and we don't have another good north-south connection.
Sixty-six.
All right, I'm sorry, sixty-six to, to five. But we don't have another, you know, it's, I don't know what the distance is, but it's a, a pretty.
About three miles.
Yeah, and, and I've always looked at, you know, we have Basalt Street kind of splitting the two and maybe. I could just show it here. Oh yeah, here we go. So here's Basalt Street and that's a north-south route. And in the future, do we have any interest in kind of rounding this curve and rounding this curve and make this other north-south route through here? Not as a city project, as a city expense, but when somebody comes in to develop these properties, that's our plan and that's how we want them to, to plan their roads through their development. At which point, how much do we, and, and if that is something that we want to think about, how much we want to improve this segment of Old Viking. So by, by doing that, then you'd have Old Viking TN and you'd have to stop at a couple of stop signs. Now it's not as a directive of route. You also maybe have some opportunity on the east end. You have some undeveloped property and, you know, maybe, maybe we want to look at, at putting a horizontal curve or something. So it's not just a straight route where people go so fast. I've never had those discussions in detail with the Roden Bridge or with the city council, so I don't know how you feel about that, but that's always something that.
You're making this whole meeting a lot easier.
I was gonna say, that's a whole nother chapter in the book.
But, but, but see, that's why we need to have a plan. You're talking about coming up Jasper and, and rounding that out where there, there isn't development at this point. You know, that discussion should take place because you do have a DNR access point right there in Jasper. And if you're not coming in all the way in from forty-seven or Cleary or from five to that point, if you could come off the county road up, up and improve Jasper to the vote access or, now, people on Basalt didn't want the, the lower end of Basalt there between what was paved and, and Old Viking didn't want it paved. When we were, when they were paving Basalt, they opted out because they didn't want the traffic coming by their places. But my understanding is that's an MSA road potentially, the Basalt Road, because that's another north-south route between sixty-six and five.
But I think that's a whole, that's, I think that's a con-plan transportation discussion, not part of our, this discussion for street maintenance. So I think that's.
Well, and, and, but it's, it's worth having that discussion, saying, yeah, that's twenty years down the road and we want to get this road to last that long.
That's, again, that's con-plan transportation planning and then, but right now, we're talking, this is maintenance stuff that we want to maintain our roads.
Okay, well, let's, let's go back to this then. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mary, I, I have to take off and please call or email me directly, but I just got a summons that I need to, I didn't, I didn't want to just go running out of the room, so thanks, I hope the information was helpful and I look forward to working with you and hopefully coming up with some good funding options.
We appreciate it, appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Bruce.
Good night, Bruce. Thanks.
Drive safe.
You too.
So, so back to a, a policy or a guideline or an understanding. Right now, Shane, you counted sixty-six properties on there. Let's think of one that's, that some of the corner lots, say on Cleary and Old Viking on the southwest. The property faces sixty-six.
So Clearing and, yep. Yep.
Yep.
Southeast.
Southeast, I'm sorry.
Southeast.
So they would not get assessed? Because they access sixty-six.
Well, if, if we so chose to only assess direct and not indirect, that's our option.
So, so the, is the question, how did you come up with the sixty-six properties?
They get direct.
They're actually, their driveway go accesses Old Viking.
Right, so this one, yeah, this one I wouldn't have included, this I wouldn't have included. You know, it's tougher when you have something like this. So I can't, the aerial's not good enough to tell where the driveway comes out. Does anybody know this property offhand?
It's your brother's, if you're in the corner sixty-six and twenty-two, he comes out on sixty-six.
Or at forty-seven?
Forty, he moved it to forty-seven, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did they come out to forty-seven?
Isn't that Al Paulson's place?
Oh, they come out to Old Viking.
Driveway's on sixty-six.
Oh, Paulson's.
But that's, that's, that's a tougher one, if they did come out to Viking, but they have all this other land here.
Well, they got two driveways, actually, there's one that comes out.
And those are the ones that are tougher to, to determine whether or not they should receive a full assessment, whether or not they should receive a partial assessment because they just maybe have a secondary driveway, or maybe they should have three assessments because they might develop this someday and add even more traffic onto the road.
Right, go west of there to Ford Brook. Okay, how do they get out of that development? That area?
These, these properties here?
They have to.
Right.
It must be pretty hard to assess them when they live on a dirt road.
I got assessed when they put in Jasper and, or the Jasper and Hundred Eighty-Fifth.
Hey, that's a quarter of a system.
Well, but, but, but again, that's where you, so then, then move down to, is it Sodium the next one? The big one there past sixty-six?
Past sixty-six, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so you got Woolfram, Two Hundred and Third coming out there. They could go north.
Right.
But if they're heading anywhere south, they're not going all the way up to twenty-four to get back to five. So they're gonna likely, majority of those people probably come south. I mean, that might be a good place for a traffic study saying, everybody's coming down here and you've got to go, you know, either, you're not going to go back to Jasper probably on a gravel road, so you can come back to five or to sixty-six or to forty-seven. So what are those parcels in there if they're primarily accessing?
Those ones are pretty tough, if they, they have another way in or out, I mean, I've been to enough assessment hearings where you hear the, I always go to the north and take County Road sixty-six.
And then when their road needs overlaid or reconstructed, they're going to be assessed again and then, well, then you're really going to hear it, so.
Right.
I, I think if you hit them once, that's enough.
So the other thing that comes into play is, okay, we think a lot of these people probably go south. Well, at some point, that might not be true. If you live close enough to the intersection up here, you, you're probably most of the time going to go to sixty-six and not go through the neighborhood as, as often. So then should they have less of an assessment because they're not using as much as the people that live?
Well, there's, there's no real good way to get to sixty-six. I mean, that's, that's part of our problem up there, which again, probably goes into our con-plan transportation. But you're not going to go up there and run down Gypsy Valley and go over on, on Verde Valley, or Gypsy Valley to sixty-six or Verde Valley over to forty-seven.
That comes out to sixty-six south of Verde Valley. Yeah, by Two Hundred Fifth.
So would it be fair to say that the city council needs to establish an assessment policy before anything else is moved forward?
I wouldn't say no. Uh, no, I think these are things that you guys need to discuss. It's some of the things that, once you figure out what road you're going to be looking at, then you need to look at which lots are probably going to be assessed and then, is that reasonable or not? And then you guys can fine tune it. Assessment policies will be, if you do a written assessment policy and you guys say, I, I'm a, Shane's heard this lecture before, I'm a big believer in not doing that when you don't do a lot of it, because you need flexibility. And when you do an assessment policy, you're Brooklyn Park that he's talking about here where you're doing this constantly and you need to be able to treat the same types of properties consistently and you're doing it all the time. Well, in that case, you better have a policy of what type of, is it per unit? Is it, you know, is it a linear foot? How, how are you figuring this out? And I, and then if it is a farm, you know, is it going to be, how many units can you get? Or how, because you want to treat people consistently equally. And so in this situation, you would figure out what roads you're probably going to improve. You would figure out, as Shane's done here, he usually does this part of his feasibility report, what the area supposed to be assessed or supposed to be and is there a direct assessment, an indirect? Then you guys would have to start looking at this and figuring out what is fair and equitable. And for that project, you have to treat the same types of clas- classification of properties the same. And I would hate for you to go and adopt this formal policy because lawyers are going to use it against you. And because you have a policy, you didn't follow it, and this may not work for your situation. So you do need some flexibility and some fluidity in that, but if you have a written policy, your judge is going to look at you and expect you to follow it religiously.
Regardless of the project.
Regardless of the project.
So each project would be unique?
Yes.
We could have guidelines.
Yeah, and that's what I.
Guidelines that we follow, but every project, we're going to have to look at what's fair and reasonable. I would love to have a, just a written policy and that's what I apply every time, but I know that it's not.
It's not feasible.
It's not feasible.
And that's what I, and that's why he knows my term guidelines, you know? Because, and, and when I say it, some of these communities that do, have, have created the program that, that Shane is talking about with the cap- five-year capital improvement plan and they work with, and they're, one of these is Bruce's client as well, who created a financial plan. And they do enough of these, you know, every year, where they have small ones and a big one and they bond every couple of years. But they, they, what their policy or guideline, you know, as you want to say, is how much on these different types and overlay they'll contribute so much. On a full reconstruct, they'll contribute so much. And then once, that's sort of a guideline that they use for treating every single group of residents that are being assessed. They can say, where, the township's portion of this is going to be X. Then, once we get into the fine tuning of the assessments, then we look at those and we do adjustments as needed for that project to make sure that it is fair and equitable. Then, the last part of that equation that I have to do is, I have to look at this and say, can I support that? Now that we've kind of got this down, can I support that? If I get challenged in a court of law and I have got to go before a judge, will I get the gavel between the eyes? Or will the judge look at this and say, yes, this is fair and reasonable? Then, if we do need to buy down that assessment amount, then I'm going to go to this city council and I'm going to say, you know, this is a little bit too high, I don't think I'm going to be able to justify that. I think we may need to contribute more money, even though it's not your policy or your guideline. We may need a little bit more infusion on your part to buy down this, if you really think this is a project you want to do. The only other thing that I have done in other situations is when we have really a lot of weird stuff and a lot of it's commercial, that's kind of tough. I mean, you, you can kind of tell what a parcel is worth and you know your, you know, how much land goes per acre and so forth. But on commercial pieces, especially some weird commercial stuff, I've, I've suggested you get like a, a, an informal appraisal. I call it a drive-by. It's not a full-blown, we're going to court, we're going to have every T crossed and I dotted. That might cost two or three, four thousand dollars, we're talking like maybe five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred bucks, you know? Go in and look at the, drive this, look at the aerials and pull some comparables and tell me kind of what you think this might do. And I usually give them a, I want the commercial properties looked at. And then he gives me a range. And that gives us guidelines so that if we, you guys do decide that you're going ahead, I kind of know in the back of my mind, this appraiser is going to be, have my back and I can, if, if somebody challenges me, I can go forward and I know that ultimately he'll put a much better appraisal report together, a litigation one, but I have a, a good shot at winning that. So these are all the things that, it's all part of this and you're not going to solve all this stuff in one night. You know, you're gonna, but this is all the things.
Trying to get the ball rolling here and so that's, it's good.
How do you feel about, in the past, on the Jasper Hundred Eighty-Fifth project, we had some farms on there and so we didn't want to hit them up too heavily, but we didn't want them to get a free ride, so we would come in and we do the street improvement and then they come in right after stunt and develop and they make tons of money off. So we put like a deferment on there that gradually went away. If they, if they didn't develop after some of the years, they paid nothing, it just, each year went down.
I did that in, just north of North, North Branch Township had the same sort of thing. And so we did that same assessment where if you didn't develop over the term of the ten-year payback, every year it went down. And yes, I've done that before. Uh, it's, I've done a lot, because most small cities and towns don't, you know, they, they want to help the farmers out and stuff, but I have done it, it's legal. And, uh, yes, I've done it before and, and, and I don't know, I asked the clerk one time about if anybody, you know, if it ever got triggered and he said, no, none of them sold, you know? But you kind of need to know that for your financing stuff, so you kind of need to talk, you, you kind of have to have an idea. Because if you deferred this and it goes down, if you were counting on that money, that's the, the downside. If you were, but if you don't factor that in and it happens, well, then it's sort of in a sense found money.
Yeah, I think we didn't factor it in when we did it, so it was found money. I don't think anybody really developed it, might have had lots put here and there, but that was.
Yeah, but it is, it, it's, it's a, and it also helps politically that somebody's not going to get a free ride.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's why, I think North Branch knew that these people would never develop. But I think the only way they could sell it to the other residents is if they did this and so I structured it in that way. And, and I, I was very clear with them, do not use any of this in your financing method because this money may never materialize. And if it does, great, you can use that money, if you want to keep it on this road, use that money for some crack filling or seal coating or something. And, but it's, again, don't factor that funds into your payback, your bonds.
Along those same lines, if we do an improvement and then say, somebody that has a forty wants to split off some lots, say it's three lots, how do you feel about, if we did not assess them, about asking them as a condition of development to contribute an amount equal to the assessment? So if the assessments were three thousand, I'd tell them, well, we think that you should agree to contribute six thousand dollars for these two new lots. And if they don't agree, then I tell the city council, I think this is going to add traffic, I think we need a traffic study. That's probably going to cost them six thousand dollars anyway, so you might as well just spend the six thousand dollars on.
Yeah, it, it gets into this little bit of a gray area where it's negotiating and I'm all for negotiating when you're doing this stuff. And, and these are things, everything, when you get, when you do a residential plat, do I have to improve the road? To what standard? Who's putting that infrastructure in? Myself or you guys going to finance it under this, one of these four twenty-nine processes? All of these things are negotiated. I'd say we could always negotiate with somebody, but to do something like that might be considered by the court system to be what they call an impact fee, which under the Country Joe case from maybe ten, fifteen years ago or more, no, it's got to be more than that now, probably at least fifteen years ago, they said you can't have an impact fee. So just because you're going to have a house on there now, you have to contribute so much, a, a set dollar amount. Now, that, that this is different because this is a whole legal process that we're following and stuff versus just saying, no. The one thing that, that somebody might claim, what, what Shane was talking about is an impact fee, but you don't have a written policy that everybody has to pay this. So I, I guess what Shane's saying is, could I negotiate with a, a new developer and try and get something for the city? And I think you could, but I'd have to be kind of part of that, at least in the background. And then if somebody started making certain waves, then we would now analyze yes or no, you know? And it gets, because some things are legit. If it's legal related back to your development, I can justify it all day long, I can go to court, I'll win. But if I can't have a specific reasonable relationship back to that, then I, I might get the gavel between the eyes. So again, it's all goes on fact, pattern, all packed on what their situation is, keep the option open. But again, I, I mean, if you wanted to put a assessment on various large, you know, farms and stuff, that, you know, how many lots they could potentially, if they came in and talked to Liz tomorrow, how many lots they could develop in and have some sort of a, a declining amount, you know, for every year, yes, I've done that. And that is one way of making sure that somebody doesn't have an inappropriate benefit.
So, a question, so are you talking, so if you have a forty and a quarter of that is on the road you're paving, but the other ones, when they, when they divide out that forty, the other lots are going to be within the forty, they, they're, they don't have direct access onto it?
Depends on what your policy will be.
Okay.
This is all the things you have to look at it and discuss because.
So it's like the ones that are up there.
A lot of times they'll say, if these people paid for, you know, this whole lot here stuff and everybody paid for here, or they may say this is bigger, you know? Then they wouldn't pay if this road's improved, you know?
So I, I think what we're, we're trying to prevent or trying to account for is, you know, like say that, we look at this specific forty.
Yeah.
And let's say that we had a policy, we're just going to charge them one unit. Um, and on this side of the road, you have four units in that same forty. There's nothing to say on that, as soon as we get done holding the assessment hearing, they could come in and plat this as four lots and only have one assessment and yield the benefit of the improvement. And so again, it's us trying to be fair with everybody and sometimes it's, it's hard to do, I mean, it, it really is.
You're going to get pushback. You will get pushback from farmers saying, you're, you're going to put me off my farm and you can tell them all you want, it's just deferred in case you do, you know? No, they, they, again.
Yeah, they don't like it.
They don't like it.
It goes against the property taxes and even though it diminishes over time, it's.
So is the threshing show, is, is the heritage, is, I mean, the historical society nonprofit?
I would think that's nonprofit, yeah.
So how does that impact them?
It, I, if they're, even though they're nonprofit, I'd, I'd want to, I think they still get the assessment.
You still pay property taxes.
They still pay property taxes and they still get the assessment.
But the cemetery depends on whether it's public or private.
Yeah, that, that one.
And I believe they got all the land across the threshing show.
And there may be a benefit for a cemetery because they might be able to sell more funeral spaces because they've got a nice improved road. I mean, again, all of this stuff is a, none of this stuff is an exact science, there's no, everything is, people will claim there's no benefit. I have, that's why I say, if there's weird things like a cemetery, I'd want to talk to, you know, formally with, yeah. But I, but this is the type of stuff that when you get into the, if it's not a residential, not a Buddhist temple.
Yeah.
Then you get into the weird stuff, that's when you probably want to spend a few dollars and talk to a professional.
Is the Buddhist temple considered a church?
We'd have to look and see how that's.
Yeah, I would probably, can probably look at it as a church.
Would they be assessed or is that a?
I think they would be assessed, because they're, again, it's not a public. And I think under the assessment laws.
They must have a legal entity.
Yeah, they, they could have any legal entity, like a church. Catholic churches is set up as a corporation, even though it's a nonprofit and even though it's a five oh one C, what is that, five oh one C three or something? Where you donate, you can get a write-off and stuff, it's still, they get assessed. And the, the question is, on some of that, is the, only question on a lot of these things is, what is the benefit? And so if you treat a commercial, some people want to have a lot more assessment against commercial property and in that situation, I usually advise getting some sort of informal appraisal, you know, drive-by type of thing to help on that because sometimes people kind of go, city council members and town board members go kind of nuts on that. And I, and I, and those are people that, if they feel like they're getting taken advantage of, they're going to get us into the, the court system. And the problem with the court system is I lose control when I'm in there. So, you know, it could cost ten thousand dollars or more on a, on a three thousand dollar appraisal, you know? Because once I'm in there, I can't get out. And, you know, it's got to go through this whole process. Even though they lose money, so do we.
So, you know, on the one hand, we want to protect farmers or large landholders and there, there's things we could do to protect ourselves in it. What kind of blowback do you see from the people with the smaller acreage, five acres or even smaller, that are just on the block saying, I got the same assessment as the sixty acres next to me or the hundred acres down the road?
And you do, and you do.
They're going to want you to go by the front foot.
There, I, that's when they say, well, shouldn't you do this by linear foot? And we say, yeah, that's an option, but we, the general answer, the, kind of the pat answer that Shane or I would give if asked that is that, right now, they only have one house there. There's no indication they're going to subdivide. They only get one house, they're making a same number of trips to the grocery store, the church, to the school and all that that you are. And so there really isn't any difference. The only question would be if they ever did subdivide and if that was the case, then the answer might be what Randy was talking about.
I, I could see on this. I got a flag lot, two houses down from the threshing show. My front footage is minimal and we're bringing in ten thousand cars at different times to go to the threshing show on that same road. And wouldn't you say their usage is significantly more than an individual resident? I can see somebody arguing that.
Yeah, and the threshing show might be looked at a little bit differently as a, almost like a commercial in nature and therefore they would get more assessments. So maybe they get, instead of one, one assessment, maybe they get five assessments or something. But again, when you get into that commercial stuff, which is kind of different and above, that's when you have some more potential. You got to make sure you got it, got it right, because it's on a parcel, like one house, and that's the assessment. You can kind of tell whether the property on a house would increase by the thirty-three hundred that we're talking about here. When you get into like a commercial piece of property and you want to give them an assessment of five units or something, or, or ten, you know, is it going to increase by thirty-three thousand? I don't know, you know? So again, those are the types of things that if we're in the, what we're trying to do is be fair to everybody, make sure we can pay the debt back and have an assessment that is potentially low enough that we're not going to get challenged on. And the more you have of these successes, the more you do of these projects, the more everybody just kind of gets used to them and it becomes norm. Nobody likes it, but it's just, everybody, everybody, everybody feels this pain.
Your, your first few projects are most likely going to be the toughest.
Yes.
Because everyone's going to have questions about what have you done in the past and we haven't been doing anything in real recent history. And a lot of times, you have those residents trying to change your mind on what your guideline or what your method is going to be. Once you have, say, a, a ten-year history, you know, we've been doing it like this, you know, we've applied this, the same concept or the same methodology in the past.
Can be some end to the pain, you're saying?
Oh, yes. Oh yeah, we see it.
Ten years, huh?
Okay, I'll use one community, nobody shows up. It's just your turn now. I mean, we've gotten it where nobody, I mean, literally, literally, there's been times when Shane and I have sat there with them and they say, did we send the notice out?
Yeah, I spent like three hours putting together a big PowerPoint and you know, I'm, I get there an hour early, I'm all set up, I make sure, and then nobody shows up. It's just.
Well, that likely happened here too.
Yeah.
But again, it didn't just happen that way. It was something that they, they did the exact same thing that your own consultants are talking about. They have Bruce, they have Shane and they have myself and we put this whole system together, it's worked for them, the levy has stayed consistently, but they're getting their roads done and they also have that same bond rating that you guys have, so they're getting the, the lower interest rates and stuff. And it's gotten to be so, I don't want to say normal, it's kind of, you know, but they don't even show up. And the one guy did show up. but they don't even show up. And the one guy did show up, one of them, and it was only because they had just moved to town and they didn't know about it. And so when they got the assessment notice, they were just kinda curious.
Yeah, for this year's overlay project, the, the president of the HOA, the homeowners association, he came and said, we had a meeting, everybody wants it, how soon can you do it? You know, and that was an assessment for an overlay of right around that three thousand dollar mark.
You know, and even though we haven't done it in a long time, we do have some history of doing it.
But people will forget that.
Not me, because I was involved in two different aspects.
You're still paying?
Well, I was involved with one hundred eighty-fifth in Jasper, which was an indirect, and I got assessed. And then after that assessment was done, then when they redid Cartagny Nebity for the first time, I was assessed for that as well.
There'll be, but the first, first ones, guys, you're gonna have a lot of anger.
No, I understand.
You didn't maintain this. It's only your fault. You should be paying for all of this. Where's my tax dollars going? Every, you know, and why are you picking yours up?
But, and again, but I, that's why I like looking at it from Shane's aspect, where if, if the city, if we're showing that we are willing to put some funds into it, we are making an investment as well. Back then, you know, I don't think the city paid any.
We didn't have any.
Yeah, so the, we paid everything, so there is.
And I, and again, it seems like a lot of money, but thirty-three hundred dollars is not that bad.
I would have paid a hundred grand for that.
Well, because again, back then, I think we paid almost that. You know, that's twenty years ago.
But the only reason you can do that is because of the huge number of parcels that are on this road. And if you were looking at that and trying to do that again.
Five forty is a good number.
Yeah, you've, and you've, you're trying to do that on other roads, it, it may skew things and we'd have to look at stuff.
I think the full assessment on that one back then, so that's back in, that was like fifty-two hundred or something. So this is even less than that, and that's twenty-five years ago. So this is, this is a good deal.
And again, that's why I say, if, if you can show residents that the city has buy-in to, and we're actually working, you know, trying to work with them, it's an easier sell than saying this is all on you, you're, you gotta pay for everything.
So if the, most likely in this event, somebody might challenge the city council. So let's just say, for example, we have a ninety-year-old widow. House has been, property's been paid for for thirty years, and they're on a, live on a social security check of a thousand bucks a month. And next door to them, you have a young couple in their forties that record a three hundred thousand dollar annual income. Can that ninety-year-old person ask for some kind of a waiver to be excused from this assessment?
It's a good question. You don't get the waiver, you get a, what they call, what Randy was talking about, deferment.
Deferment.
And so it's in the statute that allows for that if you meet certain conditions, but the city has to adopt a policy allowing for that. That's one where you actually have to adopt a formal policy.
There you go, the policy.
Yes. But this is different than you guys figuring out you're gonna do it. This is statutory, where it's actually telling you that you are saying it is okay to do it. Because most, a lot of small cities and towns do not allow it. Even though it's allowed under the statute, financially, they can't support it, because there's a lot of people that qualify for that, and they would never be able to pay the debt back. I had one community that was thinking about doing it, so I said, okay, let's go through and look at this assessment rule. How many people would qualify here? You guys know everybody? And when we started putting a highlighter on each one, and I said, okay, now you're gonna issue this, you're gonna award this contract, you're gonna issue this debt, and if you adopt this policy and you let these people all get deferred, eventually you'll get paid back, but how are you gonna come up with the money to pay the debt back?
Yeah, it's not always a win for the lady. The, the assessment doesn't go away.
And the interest doesn't go away.
It just keeps, the interest keeps adding up. The assessment plus interest, everything just keeps compounding. So it grows.
I hate to do that to some retired elderly person.
There are programs to the county. You can get a senior deferred assistance for your property taxes. You can apply for that. And then what that does is it defers it, so then when you sell the house, or the heirs sell the house, they pay back the taxes.
Nice. Okay. So they would have a person in that situation as the policy?
Could get some assistance, yeah.
And on, and on the deferment stuff, you really do have to look at kinda, how many people would qualify, because you still have to pay that debt. And in situations where, you know, you guys wanna do that, and you don't feel you have a large senior community, and you could afford to assume that, that deferment, then you can do it. It's in the statute.
And in a situation like that, would that particular person have to prove the hardship to the council?
No, not, not.
It's not hardship, it's that you qualify, if, if the, if the town, if the city council says, yes, we will allow these types of deferments, then you, as the person who is applying for that deferment, have to show that you meet that eligibility. Because it's statutory. I mean, it's not something, it's not a program that we're gonna create ourselves and modify as we see fit. It's state law.
But if we know there's something already in place that an individual like that could follow through the county, then.
If you guys couldn't do it, and you don't wanna do it across the board, but there's some little lady that you'd like to help, and you guys, and they contact you, and you could then put them in contact with any sort of, you know, county programs, community programs, whatever. It's get, my job is to kinda give, you know, protect your guys and make sure you guys can pay the debt, but there are possibly other things out there.
So now I have a little confusion going on with what you mentioned.
What I mentioning is a county program that is available for seniors, yeah, for their property taxes. What Bob was referring to is if we had a policy in place that defers for seniors.
That was my confusion. So we still would need the policy?
No, not if we chose not to do it.
Right.
But what, what Bob was saying, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we had somebody come in with that situation, they contacted Cory at the city office, she could direct them to the county and say, these are the programs, this is what you wanna do, and then we wouldn't have to have that policy.
In what situation would we have to have the policy?
We don't. And in most situations, the cities and towns do not adopt it, because they can't financially afford it.
The larger cities generally have the policies. You know, Brooklyn Park, I would, Betty Man, I'd say they have it.
Sure. Anoka or Ramsey?
Maybe Anoka, probably not Ramsey. You know, I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight, but I still don't know that we're anywhere closer to actually implementing a project. And really, if that's a goal of the city, if it's what your residents are, want, we need to start defining some steps to get there. And to me, there's a few things. One is, do we know what projects we're looking at? Or are there still, do we still wanna look at kinda that map that I showed earlier and see if there's other roads other than, say, this Old Viking that might be?
Well, that's kinda why I mentioned the traffic study, because in our meetings, we always seem to talk about Ebony and Garnet. And we always, now lately, Mr. Glaze seems to think that possibly, maybe, and I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but if I understand correctly, maybe there's become a little more urgency on Old Viking. And I think his reasoning for that is because we can still save that road, where Ebony, Ebony and Garnet are beyond, you know, their pass of the point already there.
And I would also caution with Ebony and Garnet, you know, there's, there's some pretty big soil problems there.
That's why I asked for the soil borer.
And we have fixed a lot of them, though.
And everything that's fixed is actually held up.
Okay. But you know, that's, with reconstruction projects like that, it's, it's always, you don't know what's, you can't see what's under the ground.
Right.
And so you can have surprises with the road project.
Yeah.
And so that would be one caution. You know, like a overlay project, you don't have as many surprises. Something like Ebony and Garnet, you could have some surprises. You, you open that road up, you know, you have a contract with the contractor, but that's for a specific scope of work. And we try to make that as narrow as possible, so we get the best bid as possible. If we have a bunch of ambiguous stuff in there, we're gonna get a really inflated bid. And so that would be a project that if we went into it, you know, it could, we could estimate it at this, we could, I mean, sometimes we have two hundred thousand dollar soil corrections. I won't see that there, but a hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far when you're trucking a bunch of material out and bringing a bunch of material back in.
My recommendation, of course, would be to do soil borers on Ebony, Ebony.
I think we did. Yeah.
We did, they did some, I know they did some.
Now you're stretching my memory, but.
I stood and watched them do some, so I know.
Did you? Okay, yeah, yeah, we did.
But they didn't do enough to know that's the next project.
I guess, yeah, I don't know how many they didn't where, you know, where they did them all, but.
I, I think that road needs to be re-looked at, since we've done some of the soils corrections, and I've asked Joe about that area in particular just lately, and I think he says they're all done, except maybe, there might be one more thing since.
Oh, actually?
Yeah.
Okay. And you know, if.
So it might be good enough now, or maybe it could be just an overlay. Because everything they've protected when they passed in, too, then they put in, I think it's four inches, so, and things are holding up quite well.
Okay, good.
I think the question's still gonna be which road? Because I can see the value of, of Old Viking, because of its visibility. If you wanna have a success, you're coming in with a, you know, potentially reasonable cost. The city's still gotta come up with two hundred and seventy thousand. If that five hundred and forty is, is a good number. The screaming I'm hearing is the Rogers Lake area, they probably have the oldest roads. And, you know, when Joe has done patches or culvert repair down there, he's pulled out a lot of tree trunks.
And there, there, that two hundred thousand dollar soil correction could be a realistic thing. Because we just don't know. And even if you do twenty soil borers, we're still gonna be three hundred feet apart, and, you know, it's.
And if, and if you haven't done this in ten years, and you're starting this program up again, you want a success.
Well, like Shane says, too, I, if we're gonna do something and pick something to start, I'd love to pick something with the biggest bang for our buck. And if that, you know, and that's where I, I would rely on you, and if that's what you say Old Viking is that, or fits into that, then that's where we start.
I, I think in conjunction with that is, is the plan, what's next? Because from a budget standpoint.
Yes.
You know, where, where do we go? And that's why I think we need to have a, a study, or, you know, something presented that says, you know, what's, what's the plan from the roads, and what's the plan financially?
My proposal would be to take a look at, you know, so, so we have Ebony and Garnet, we have Old Viking, and then we also have quite a few roads that are probably going on that seventeen, eighteen-year-old mark. And also look at those and consider them. Maybe they're not as high of a priority, but they should at least be considered, because that, the Old Viking, quite honestly, is a little bit past the ideal time for an overlay. It's.
Well, I was gonna give you another question. Are, are we still within the window where that's gonna hold up? I mean, does your five hundred and forty that you looked at two years ago, do, do there need to be more corrections than just a, a consistent overlay all the way down? How much more work's it gonna need?
Yeah, I, I drove it today on the way here. I would say seventy percent of the road is in fairly decent shape and, and could be overlaid. What concerns me is the other thirty percent that's not. The, the thirty percent that's already showing some alligator cracking, it has weaker subgrade. If we just overlay that, that's gonna be the first part to break up again. And so generally, I like to either patch those areas, or at least do a little something more. Maybe I do a inch skim patch on top of them or something, give them a little bit extra strength. And we have a little bit of the road sliding off into the wetland, or some settlements. I noticed that in a couple places.
And you recommended that there would be isolated patching.
Right.
In two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, and, and so that, that's a number that keeps on growing. And at some point, it, it's, my preference is to overlay the roads before there's, when there's very little of that. So they actually look like they're in relatively decent condition, but they don't have a lot of alligator cracking. They just have the normal transverse cracks every forty feet or so. And that's, then when, after you overlay it, you won't have as much of that, the alligator cracking or the random cracking reflect through the surface. So to me, some of these other roads, like your first assessment, Paul, you know, that project, maybe a couple of the developments should even be, you know, maybe they're not the city's highest priority, but they should at least be considered, because by doing those now, we can prevent them from getting alligatored or having problems in the next five years.
Mr. Eric, how long would it take you, or how soon could you have a proposal to the city council of a cost estimate to put together some ideas of some roads, of what you feel are the most imperative roads to be looking at? So we can get this thing a bit along.
Took, took most of the words out of my mouth here. That's what I'm saying. You have to have a plan.
It's probably a lot shorter, though.
And we're not gonna throw it back to Road and Bridge. Yeah, probably was a lot shorter.
Right, but I'd like to work with the Road and Bridge. I mean, I mean, that's, 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 that's the committee that is looking at this. And, and so, I mean, I've attended some Road and Bridge committee meetings in the past, not in recent years, but.
If we can get you to, to put together a proposal to the council.
Oh, how long would the proposal take?
Proposal, so we can get a cost to have you work with the Road and Bridge.
Proposal to you next week. Proposal doesn't take.
Would you be able to have it before our workshop, if we put it as an agenda item pending the proposal to the council?
It's a week from tonight.
For, for budgeting purposes, you know, we're in our, doing our budgets right now. We should, from the report there, we should be looking at trying to get closer to that two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Just to maintain. Yeah, I, I really think that's a little bit on the low side. You know, Linwood Township, I think they're about forty-three hundred people. And I, I'm not their engineer, but I think they spend, some years, three hundred thousand, some years, about five hundred thousand. And they're starting to slowly catch up. But I actually worked on a, a five-year plan for them when I was brand new, like around two thousand, two thousand one. And it took them like twelve or thirteen years to get through the five-year plan.
When you work on those plans, or when you consider the two hundred and forty or what have you, do you take into consideration if they're getting LGA, MSA, or in our case, small cities funding? I mean, are you incorporating that as part of the monies of the two hundred and forty thousand that should be allocated towards that?
I generally don't get too much into the financing side of things.
He doesn't care where it comes from, he just tells him what's going on.
Right, I tell you what I, what, what repairs I think are needed, and how much I estimate those are cost. And that's where Bruce comes in, on, on how you're gonna.
So how do you, how do you manage the levy impact? That's where Bruce comes in. You look at the need, he looks at the, can I help you level that, or do you just kinda take your loss?
And then Bob says it's illegal.
So we invited the three of you.
Right, yeah.
You know, so, so out of this, Bob, you're gonna give us a list of the process?
Yes, I'll give you a very short bullet point, maybe a page or two of just, of the, of the, sort of the documents and the stuff. It's not, there's not much more. It's just basically two public hearings. But I'll get that for you.
Shane, you're gonna give us a proposal on what it would take to put this plan together, working with the Road and Bridge?
Yeah, so I, I think, and, and you know, it's al, it's always hard for me, because something like this, it's, how many revisions are there going to be? You know, how many times? But, but my proposal would include looking at the, the roads that I think should be considered. I'll drive all the roads. I'll, I'm gonna use some, I'm not gonna do detailed estimates, because then we'd be talking about a, a twenty thousand dollar study. And I'll just use a, an average cost per mile to come up with some ballpark numbers of what these projects might cost. And then I can work with the Road and Bridge to help, help me prioritize them. You guys know the city, I mean, I've, I've been doing a lot of work here, but you guys live here, and you know what probably is more priority than, than others, and then.
Perry never goes off a county road.
And then from there, probably attend a, a city council meeting or workshop to discuss Road and Bridge's recommendation, my recommendation, and city council input.
Is this something reasonably, we, we, we've gotta have our final budget to the county at the end of September? Do we have a realistic number for, you know, for this coming year?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, what I always say is, is, as I do my, more of my work, the, the estimates get burned up tighter and tighter. So first, I, I have the. So first I, I have the, the general cost per mile, and then you might order a feasibility report where I try to estimate some units, but I don't actually put the plans together and know the units. And then after that, then I put together plans and specs where I can actually measure all the units and know exactly what goes into it. But a lot of times, those plans and specs take quite a bit of time. So as we go through, the, the numbers go from being, you know, kind of ballpark numbers, and they get refined to a point of contractor bids, if you get to that point.
But for budgeting purposes, though, Shane has in, in his Road and Bridge report, what he feels that it should take to maintain our roads. We, we know that.
Yeah.
We just gotta figure out how, in our budgeting purposes, how we can try to somehow get to that point or slowly get ourselves to that point?
My, my question, I guess, do those numbers include engineering cost to support that on the bigger projects?
When I, when I provide a project cost, that is the total project cost. So it, it includes, I mean, it's an average project cost per mile.
540 on Old Viking, from five to 47, that includes engineering support.
Correct.
It usually includes legal and, because it's just, it, it, Shane estimates based on past experience and practice kind of what all of these different costs might be, and he incorporates it in there. And there's usually even a contingency fund built into that as well.
So you drive through a report test, so you're gonna drive all the roads and decide which ones are simple overlay, which ones are reconstruct?
I don't think I'll drive all the roads. I think I'll just look at that kinda, the sweet spot, the, the ones that were constructed maybe in the late 90s to the early 2000s, 97 to 2003, or somewhere in there.
That's gonna be mostly.
Well, I, I don't think I'd go way too new as a...
That was your city.
I wouldn't go quite as new as the milestone pond development, Bailey Estates, Quiet Meadows. You know, I'd be looking at the ones prior to that, like the Oak Pond, the Autumn Acres, the, basically the ones that John Harwood did. And they're, they're approaching that 20 years old.
Cory, which roads do you get the most complaints about?
It depends on the complaint. We get complaints right now because they didn't get dust control. So it depends on what...
Part of what we're talking about here tonight, which roads do you get the most complaints about?
Again, it's, it's, you know, some, in the spring, it's potholes. In the winter, it's flowing. It, they're just, we don't get a lot of complaints saying, my road is so bad, when are you gonna fix it? It's generally, we don't get those. It's why didn't we get the dust control this year.
But it's kinda like you said, Perry, when you told people at this meeting. They're just frustrated, and they're not, they're not calling and complaining anymore.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say, because...
They're complaining up and down the road.
Four, five years ago, it was very common in Road and Bridge meetings to get one or two or 10 people, and they all came from Ebony and Garnett complaining. And it seems like now, I don't think a lot has been done, but do those people just get tired of complaining and they don't come no more?
No, I, it's hard to say, because again, I mean, I think for the most part, in the summertime, it's generally the, they want the road graded or why didn't we get dust control? Those are our biggest complaints in the summertime. In the spring, it's always, we've got lots of potholes, when are you gonna come out and fix them? And on occasion, it might be, hey, are you thinking of paving our road or doing some improvements to it? But it's not consistent to any specific roads.
What I'm looking for, I guess, is where's the, where's the squeakiest wheel? Where does Shane need to go put the oil on first?
Yeah, I couldn't give you, I couldn't even give you the idea.
Well, my, my, just personal testimony is, you're gonna get it on Old Viking and Rogers Lake area. That's the people that call me. The rest of them, either they're tolerating it or they're giving up, or they're fine with it.
Well, I still hear, I, I hear positives and negatives still about Ebony and Garnett, obviously. We've, we've done some, or Joe's done some repairs that have solved a lot of issues. Like, I think Randy was saying, there's probably one area in there now that's still pretty bad. And it gets boiled up in the spring, but, you know, other than that, what, what we have done and has actually done a huge part, you know, to fix the bad areas that were in there.
I think, you know, and, and we put time and, and good success into that road. The complaints are getting down in, in Rogers Lake is, you know, other than some culvert repair we've done in recent years, they haven't seen any activity down there in quite some time.
Joe's done some repairs, he's got quite a few of them stump holes out.
Yeah, but I mean, they're, they're saying, you know, it's reactionary rather than any planned, what, what are we doing with these roads?
Well, and that's our...
That's, that's what they're saying, you know?
Well, that's our problem, though, Jeff. We had, in the last 10 years, we haven't planned anything, and that's the whole point of this.
So we can, so can we include, make sure we include Rogers Lake in that?
Yeah, yeah, Rogers, we can, we certainly can. I think Rogers Lake is a, a big task. And I'm not sure that we wanna tackle that, at least within the first few years of getting back into our, our road program.
From, from a, a visible success standpoint, that'll be very visible to those neighbors, but again, a part of town that you can only get to by driving out of town to get to it won't have the same impact as something that everybody goes to the threshing show on.
And also what I'm, what I'm scared of is if, if we run into some bad soil corrections, things that we don't know are there.
It'll lead up all your funds.
Well, that's what I...
Let's see, let's say it costs an extra a couple hundred thousand dollars more, and now we, we have a limited fund, and, and now we can't do next year's project. And that's, that would be my biggest hesitation.
And that, that, I guess that was my point, too, going with Shane's comment about the biggest bang for the buck is, you know, what, you know, Rogers Lake, yeah, it needs to be fixed, but again, at what cost, to what benefit, are we getting the biggest bang for our buck?
But there might, there might be some short-term work that could be done down there.
Oh, yeah, no, I am not saying that.
And that's why I'm going, let's at least take a look at it. We may not be able to overlay the entire thing, but, but I know there are pretty decent potholes that have been there for a while, and there might be some short-term work where we need to patch a few spots.
Maybe we could do an Ebony Garnett patch to it that, that gets most of it, or gets the biggest things, the, the bone shakers out of there.
I don't think we have enough money to, to take care of both at this point. I think we should tackle one project at a time. Get Old Viking done 2018. And as, as we get this project moved on, we go through the process, we find out how everything works, and get that worked out, and then, and then plan 2019 for Ebony and Garnett.
I think that's why we're engaging Shane to help us figure that out. So I might wrap it up. It's 10:15 almost. Anybody else? The, the only thing we really didn't get to is something we need to consider is those residents on gravel roads that are starting to ask about blacktopping those. We need to have a response to them saying, do we need to get? Question came to me the other day, do I need all of my neighbors or the majority of my neighbors if we wanna get blacktopped? If I got one or two holdouts, do we just say we're gonna, we're going to pay our portion of this city, pay their portion, and those people be darned? Or do we need, you know, so we need to have some guidelines for the city to respond to people that now that people aren't being concerned about the gravel roads and blacktop. We haven't had that request in quite some time either. But we need to have a way to address that. I mean, all of this attention is on existing blacktop roads, but as, as people see their levies go up and they continue to live on gravel roads, there, there's gonna be more questions.
Are these gravel roads higher traffic roads, or are they cul-de-sacs?
The, the request I got this week is a cul-de-sac that at one time was considered to be extended out to 22. I don't know if that's a reasonable thing with the wetlands and everything else that's there, but, but originally it was, was scheduled to go through. But no, it's not high-traffic road. Just the people that live on the end of it have, as they tell me, very, very expensive vehicles.
There was a hearing on that road once years ago, and a majority of the residents did not...
Yeah, and that's, that's what I told them, and they said, well, that's changed now because it's all but two. And I said, you'd have to show me that because I know those people. If you get all but two, good luck.
It goes through the same process, and, and, you know, if you have two that contest it and you can't prove that they have the benefits there, then...
And the other question, when you're going on that, and you, you have to have enough parcels to spread this along or the cost is just prohibitively high.
Yeah, because you're never gonna, you're never gonna get that value to the property.
The reason you can look at Old Viking is you just told me there were 66 parcels, and that's how you divide it up and you spread it out. The more people you have to spread, the, the cheaper it gets for everybody. On a small cul-de-sac type thing with a limited number of parcels, it's gonna be prohibitively expensive to do. And so it may be that you, you know, you may have it where it, it just costs prohibitive. I mean, if you can get a number from Shane about what it would take to ca, you know, pave it a cost per mile, and you tell him, I said, you know, based on this, we'd be looking for you guys to pay, you know, X, or, or, even if we contributed some dollars towards it, then your, your part of this is going to be X, and that's gonna be more than you're will, they're ever willing to pay.
I, I did suggest that, you know, the way Basalt got through was, was a property owner contributed a significant amount to drive down everybody else's assessment. They contributed all of theirs, and I think it was 45% of the rest. I said, if you wanna do that, you can probably sell your neighbors. Until you get there, you're, you're likely gonna be struggling. But anyway, so we're, so we're consistent with that.
I think a good way to look at gravel roads, I mean, if we could try to summarize how much money we spend on maintaining our gravel roads on an annual basis, we know how many miles of gravel roads we have, and come up with a cost that we spend per mile. And then same thing, look at a, the cost of a, that road if we were to pave it over a 30-year lifespan and contribute about the same thing. I mean, we can reasonably predict what the, the initial capital cost is, if we're gonna seal coat it or crack fill it every couple of years, and then say schedule an overlay at year 18. We can predict about what those costs would be, and I've done that for other communities, and, you know, they, they come up with, we'll contribute around 40%. You know, then it doesn't really cost the city any money to...
But it still costs, you've gotta look at how much per mile and how many parcels you got there. And do, start doing the math. It's all in the numbers, and can I prove that their property values increased by the amount we're going to assess?
And what the soils are. It's that road that he's talking about, there's some, there's some issues there.
Shane, question for you. Gravel to asphalt. Are you seeing many cities, based on costs of maintaining asphalt, going from asphalt back to gravel? I've been reading different articles on that, and some smaller towns are doing that. And, and some of it is because the residents don't wanna pay to, to replace or maintain that asphalt. So then the only o, their option is to take the asphalt out and go back to gravel?
I, I haven't been seeing, I mean, I know, I, there's, I've seen a couple of articles on that also. I know we, Hedgehog and Mark's at, that one's back to gravel. And that, that actually worked there, I think, that they're happier. I used, that, that's the last time it was at Road and Bridge meetings, was listening to, to those residents when it was a paved road in, in poor condition. But I, yeah, it's just not something that's happening a lot in the metro. I'm act, I am actually seeing kind of a uptick in, you know, we have an aging road system, and we're starting to realize it. And we wanna start doing more road work or road maintenance.
All right, anything else for the council tonight? Thank you all for your patience, your participation. Thank you, Shane, and Bob and Bruce for, for being with us and sharing. And I, I think this is a, a good start. We got a way to go yet, but we can get the ball rolling here and get a plan together for both the, the roads to address and the funding to handle it. We good? During the meeting. Thank you all. 10:20.